Good morning. Today is January 28th. It is now 10 o'clock and we will start now the Montegalea County Commission meeting. At this time, I will call to order the meeting and do the roll. Commissioner Callen?
Here.
Commissioner Hawkins?
Here.
Great. At this time, I ask to stand up and do a moment of silent meditation and pledge to the flag. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to thank you all for coming and we'll move forward. Consent and approval?
There are nine exonerations, $963.62 for tax years 2013 and 14. Fiduciary matters, orders of January 28th, and statement for services for Armistead and Stafford, minutes of December 17, 24, 31, and January 7. General County Fund expenditures, $192,531.1. General County Purchasing Card, $8,655.09. Cole Severance Fund, $21,217.94. Kent Muffley, $422.63. Chestnut Ridge Park, $5,009.358. Mason Dixon Park, $15.71. Mason Dixon Purchasing Card, $32.24. Assessors Valuation Fund, $2,059. Home Confinement Fund, $2,109.63. 911 Cash, $254. Morgantown Industrial Tiff, $1,007,4981. For total of $234,981.94. I have one budget revision for litter control, moving $1,000 into advertising and $1,000 into supplies.
Okay, and how's...do we want to do this?
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? It passes. Okay, at this time, for those of you who are new, we change things around so we can have comments from the public now, so that way we can hear it and then discuss your issues later. So, please, if you want to speak, you just stand up, state your name, address, and we'll come forward. You're more than welcome. And the public portion is now open.
Good morning, County Commission, all of the County Commissioners, for the public here. My name is James Giuliani, other at 256 Prairie Avenue, Morgantown, West Virginia, Historic Alexander Wade House, and very proud of National Landmark. I come here today before you, I've been before you for the last couple of years, asking about private properties, public-private partnerships in relationship with West Virginia University. My understanding that I hold before me in my iPad is an email that I received with an assessment for College Park, American Campus Communities as a developer with WVU. I understand there's been an assessment now, which I'm thankful to this commission and thankful to the Assessor's Office, Mark Music, for the hard work that he did, and we're very happy that we have this assessment. Now with this assessment, though, what I want to know is, what exactly does this mean? I think I understand what it means, but does the public, has the public been even letting know what this means and the ramifications that we're going to have going down into the future? Everybody said two years ago when I walked in here that WVU was off limits. I was told that they couldn't be touched, that they're an exclusive entity, therefore nobody could challenge them and their ability to be taxed or their partners to be taxed. As we found out by the Assessor's decision, we found out that their exclusive right can be compromised, and it has been compromised, and it's probably been compromised in many other ways, in other types of developments that they've done, and other types of tax structures, and things that have been bought and taken off the tax rolls. That being said, we need to start reexamining those, all those things we looked at before, and look at this in a different manner. We now know that WVU needs to come to the table. Gordon Gee makes a comment, and I've heard it at his Washington alumni, and I've heard it in speeches that he's given in different places, and he talks about competition. Competition isn't what you want, but cooperation is what we all need. Competition is healthy. That is the lifeblood in the sense that you have to have competition, otherwise people get complacent. But guess what? It doesn't make much sense for us to compete against ourselves. Why should we have private businessmen? Why should we have people in the public of the county of Montegalea, the city of Morgantown, fighting with WVU, who's supposed to be the lifeblood of the state of West Virginia? Now, I understand, I believe that. I believe that they are, but I also believe that they reside in the city of Morgantown, West Virginia, in Montegalea County, and therefore we need an equal playing field. I believe this decision has now helped level that playing field. But what I want to say to you, this is the beginning. This is the beginning. This is the first step. We need to have a dialogue. We do not need to compete with each other. We do not need to bring tempers out. We do not need to bring personalities out. What we need to do is come together as a community, always one, West Virginia University, all the communities, Grandville, Westover, Star City, and the city of Morgantown, along with the county, working together as one, not each of us doing our own things. If the left hand doesn't know what the right hand is doing, there is no way that we can go as a community and go outward and onward and be the best that we can be. I want to thank this community. I want to thank this commission. I want to thank the Assessor's Office. I want to thank the people that stood out with me, Dave and Rick Beaufort, Zip Shear, people who put out on their own, okay, and did things, Andy Smith, the attorneys who helped us. They did get paid, but they helped us, okay? Understand that. All the people who donated. So I'm here to thank people today, and I want to say to us, let's open up the dialogue, let's move forward, and let's have this positive thing happen with WVU. They want to grow. We want to grow. Let's all grow together. I want to thank you all very much for this time.
Thank you very much for your comments. Is there anyone else who would like to speak from the public at this time? And I do want to go on record, Mr. Giuliani, you are correct. You've been coming here for two years, and you have been pushing this point, and you've been very gracious, and I appreciate your support, and we're moving in the right direction. But I think you used the word that all three of us want to hear, which is cooperation, and I think that's what we're moving towards in the future. So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Did you want to...
President.
Sure, go ahead.
I appreciate your words, and normally we don't comment on public, but I got a call last night. It just amazes me that the people that like to put out hateful nasty stuff about public officials. I got a call last night, and I won't disclose who it was, because even, he called me because he heard a rumor from a rumor from a rumor type thing, so he, rather than pass the rumor on, he called me to get the truth. This rumor, before it appears in the paper, because the paper loves to have rumors, is totally untrue, and that is that Mark Music, our assessor, has buckled under political pressure and is doing this simply because you, Mr. Giuliani, and the Beauforts have threatened action against him in future elections, which is totally false and untrue before it appears in the paper.
I would like to say...
Well, let me finish. Let me finish. Mr. Music and his chief deputy, Chuck Penn, hours upon hours, late night, he even had, they even asked me to help participate in analyzing case law from all over the United States, case law here. You brought stuff in, the Beauforts brought stuff in, other people brought stuff in, WVU brought stuff in. I attended meetings with the sheriff and the assessor with WVU, with their presenting their stuff. And this past summer, as the commission knows, and Mr. Hawkins may also be aware, because he's been watching what we've been doing, this past summer, the assessor came in and said that it's such a huge amount of legal volume with disparity between this and this and this, and we got one of our renowned lawyers in town here, Ray Yegel, who can confirm this, that you can read, especially as a layman, you can read this case, and this is what Mark said, "I read this case, I say, oh, it's taxable." Then I read this case, it says, "Oh, it's not taxable." Oh, I read this case, "Oh, it's taxable." And he was going like that. Isn't that the way, isn't that the way it happens, Ray?
Yes, sir.
And he said, "I need help." So he came to us, and we entered an agreement with a highly reputable state tax attorney in this state that had nothing to do with Morgantown, had nothing to do with one, someone totally separate, they had no connection to WVU, no connection to any, the Morgantown property owners, just totally independent, to do an analysis of, legal analysis of all those cases that he had been trying to interpret and all the information and statutes and laws. He got an opinion, and he followed that opinion. It has nothing to do with politics and anyone that would degrade our assessor, Mr. Music, for his final decision on this, because the State Tax Department wasn't helping. The State Tax Department said, "No, we got to hear an appeal." In reality, there probably will be an appeal, the State Tax Department, the circuit court. But our assessor, Mr. Mark Music, did a good faith analysis based on the legal decisions of all the case law, the commission paid half and the assessor paid half. So I wanted to kill this before it appeared in the paper, that Mr. Music somehow was playing political politics. He's not. He's doing a dedicated, honest job that he was elected to do.
Sir, I'd like to add that you're very correct in that, and I've said, in what I had said to you, and I don't want it to be missed in it, that we have strong personalities, people like myself, people like the Beauforts, okay?
And we like that. I like that.
We feel strongly about our community, okay? We go about things different ways, all right? What I want to say moving forward, let's not let those personalities get in the way, because that's not the important thing. Let's not get the emotions that has been so heavily invested in this. The time that you said that Mark spent, I probably counted my hours now, Eldon, and I know Mark did his due diligence, and I know that because he worked with me in good faith, but I probably have over 2,000 hours, many meetings and things, and I appreciate all that you've done, and you're very right. He based it on the facts. He looked at everything. He did go back and forth. We said, we went at it so many different ways. We discussed it, and thank God that we see that there is a level playing field that can be brought out, the WVU can be brought to the table, and Mark was recognized at the commission recognition, and I thank you all very much again. But there were no politics in this, you know, only that people had it in their minds, that nothing was played out. Mark was very honest, very honest about the process. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Did you want to make a comment?
Only to state that in my meetings that I have had, in the past few weeks with WVU, they have been most positive toward this.
Okay. Is there anyone else who wants to speak, since several of the people just walked in the public portion? Good. At this time, we will now close it and we will move forward. We have Ms. Dana Johnson to introduce new employee. Is Dana out there? Come on down.
Good morning.
Come on in.
I'm just here to introduce a new employee.
Great.
This is Cameron Rattball. He is going to be a full-time dog warden on third shift.
Okay.
He'll have full benefits, and he'll have a six-month probationary period.
Are you related to Rattball, so in Preston County?
Oh, you're related to him, so...
I'm related to him.
He'll start in February.
But I don't know him, so that shouldn't be...I'm related to a whole bunch of people in Preston County.
So, since you don't know him, so you're allowed to vote.
So I'm allowed to make the motion. I moved to approve his appointment.
It's been properly moved in second to hire Cameron. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? No? Okay, it does pass. Welcome. And when did you say he starts?
February 2nd.
Oh, great. Right after the Super Bowl. Okay.
There you go.
Well, thank you.
Thanks.
Nice to have you aboard.
Thanks for joining us.
More Preston County people, we're happy. Within that right, Sheriff Kizner, you're not going to say anything negative about Preston County.
Well, let's not go too far.
[laughing]
Great. At this time, we will have Ms. Renetta McClure to see what kind of grants we can get and got and have to sign for.
Yes. Can I move your little man here?
Yes, you can move my little man.
Okay.
With my little doll.
Let's, we have one reimbursement to get out of the way first.
Okay.
It is for the Emergency Solutions Grant that covers connecting Link, RDBIC, Bartlett House, and Curtis House, for the month of December, $18,464.71. That's all the reimbursements that I have here.
Move to approve the reimbursement.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? It passes? Sign the rest of my name.
Okay.
Okay.
I need you to use a blue pen.
Oh, I can use the blue pen.
Okay. We have a community participation grant application for Pace Enterprises for equipment, the amount of $10,000. This grant will start June the 1st of 2015. Will continue for one year, so they have one year to spend that money. That is the grant application. I have a resolution. Would you like me to read it?
Please.
To authorize the application and contract for the West Virginia Governor's Community Participation Grant Program funds, whereas $10,000 in Governor's Community Participation Grant Program funding was set aside by the West Virginia Legislature for the county of Montegalea to undertake for Pace Enterprises, and whereas the county of Montegalea has applied for funding through the West Virginia Development Office, and whereas the Governor's Community Participation Grant Program requires that local government unit enter into a contractual agreement with the West Virginia Development Office to receive and administer grant funds. Now therefore, be it resolved by the commission of the county of Montegalea, West Virginia, that the president is hereby authorized to execute said agreement and any other necessary documents on behalf of the commission, and that he be empowered to sign the contract and any agreement necessary to obtain these funds.
Move to approve the resolution. That's right.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved in second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? It passes? Thank you.
Okay. Piece of information for each of you.
Yes.
Eldon, you remember Martin Bossen?
Yes.
That came in about the World War II grave sites?
Yes.
He is applying for a grant for the West Virginia Humanities Council. Their major grant application is $20,000. Martin is participating in a documentary about his journey that he came to...
When he came what?
Yes.
Yes.
And they're going to be filming for approximately six months. They have asked the county commission to be the sponsoring agency on the grant. We don't have to provide any money. We are going to produce or provide a portion of my salary and benefits for an in-kind match, so we're not actually going to be spending any money because I will be doing the paperwork. We'll handle. So, we don't have the application exactly done at this point. I'm expecting that probably tomorrow morning, because they are, you know, six hours, there's six hours difference between us, so, anyway, it has to be postmarked by the 31st, so hopefully tomorrow or even Friday morning, I will have the completed application from Martin, and if you guys would authorize Tom to go ahead and sign that, I can get that postmarked and get it in mail.
I would move to endorse the participation in this grant program as you described, and authorize our president, Mr. Tom Bloom, to sign the necessary paperwork to get the grant.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. Before we go on, I also want to tell you some good news. When he contacted me, and I have to give a great deal of credit, Renetta contacted the State Department. There's a new division, you might want to just explain, of the grants that we are applying for, and it's ironic, when Martin was over here, he spent a semester doing research work, and the people there, he worked for. So they are helping him get the grant, so they're very excited about it, too. So this is all about, again, for those who realize, the person who died defending, actually, the city where he lived, and then he, we're going to name a bridge, there's a bridge naming that we've put in over in Scotts Run, O Sage, and Mr. Statler is pushing, promoting that. So it's a pretty exciting adventure that we're moving forward, and I think it's going to be really nice. West Virginia is very excited that a film, a document is going to be filmed here. He also said that what they want to do is, we're going to be invited because they want to have a showing at one of the theaters here, and we would have a kickoff showing at the same time in the Netherlands as in here, and we're the, we're going to be the scheduled guest, but we're also going to invite everybody. But I think it's a neat idea, so again, I thank you. I think this is really exciting. So it's been properly moved in second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anything else?
That's all.
Great. Right, right? Okay, right on target, we have, oh, hi, Ms. Beaufort, are you planning to speak, I mean, for the public portion?
The public comments section.
Okay, I'll tell you, with, I will ask at the end of the meeting to suspend the rules since we have changed the public comments now on the front, but I don't believe there's a problem since you have always come, did not realize that, so...
You said suspend the rules.
We'll just suspend the rules.
Thank you, sir.
Let me just get the Sheriff Kizner right now, and then we can suspend the rules since we're working your time.
Oh, I have the sheriff.
Yeah, let the sheriff, the sheriff go first.
I need him someday.
Yeah.
It might be today.
Yes.
This is mine.
Okay. Do we get the fancy copy?
Oh, well, you're the president. You get the...
Oh, geez, I got the helicopter. Just so I can see it right.
Gentlemen, what we have today are three prospective new employees that we wanted to present. The first is Louise Michael.
Aye.
She will be hired as a part-time processing transport officer at a salary of $10.56 per hour, starting January 27th, with a six-month probationary period, and of course, by virtue of being a part-time position, no...
Benefits.
Benefits. Jeez, thanks.
Is she related to the...
Not that big of a word.
Is she related to the Michaels in Preston County?
No, sir.
Oh, well, we're probably not related.
Next one is Richard Mergle. Richard will be also hired as a part-time processing transport officer at $10.56 per hour, six-month probationary period, and E2, starting January 27th, with no benefit eligibility.
Okay.
All right, and last one is somebody we had before. He left for a little while, decided he couldn't live without us, and now is coming back, Nick Junkins. We will be hiring him as a full-time home confinement officer at a monthly salary of $2,091.54. His effective start date will be February 1st, and he will also have a six-month probationary period, and by virtue of being a full-time position, will be eligible for full benefits.
Move to approve the employment as listed.
Okay, since it's been properly moved in second, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? It passes. Congratulations. Welcome, and I really liked your tie, I want you to know.
Nice to have you aboard.
Nice, yes.
Nice to have you back.
Yes, thank you very much for working for the county. Hopefully, it'll work out for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay. At this time, with permission from...
I would, I would move to suspend our agenda and allow for additional comments from the public, given the fact that it's only been a couple of weeks since we changed the public comment from the end of our meetings to the first part of our meeting.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved second to suspend the rules for public comments. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The rules may be suspended. We will go back to comments from the public if you just state your name and address.
David Beaufort, 6200 Midland Drive. First, welcome, Mr. Hawkins. Good luck. And just briefly, I'm sorry I had to change the rules on you, I changed the rules, but I'll know to come early.
We actually changed the rules on you.
I just wanted to kind of speak a little bit on this, the assessment that has been forthcoming, and everyone's work so tirelessly on, and, you know, we apologize to inconvenience or make a scene and listen to the newspaper on what they write and don't write, but, you know, we didn't really want to litigate, but the group decided we had to do something, you know, to collect these taxes. It's, you know, it's not a celebratory time. What we need to do is continue to work together, maybe have some workshops, and, you know, everybody has a different view, whether it's a lawyer with his view, whether it's an accountant with his view, the IRS, but it's very, very important that everybody understands that taxes for this community, you know, there's a lot of people paying a lot of taxes, and everybody needs to be treated equally on one basis, but, you know, this, this is large, and there's a lot more work to be done, you know, specifically, when, you know, WVU's, they're fantastic. I mean, without them, this community really wouldn't roll like it does without Mylan and a lot of big companies, and we have to look at ways to maybe work with them, and I have no problem giving, you know, breaks or you all doing, you know, any kind of tax incentives for new developments and things that, you know, industrial that create jobs. But when there's a profit-making business, whether it be selling food, or selling books, or leasing apartments, or real estate, you know, it's unrelated to income and schooling, and it needs to be taxed, and, you know, one of the situations that still isn't, hasn't not been resolved yet, is the Applebee's piece of land and building, and the old United Bank Building where Clear Mountain is. You know, that was a $27 million property that was sold, $180,000 in taxes. What we got to remember is, you know, the assessment that Mark has levied now on these private publics, which are private, they're the ones making the money, at what it's on the books now, that's over $2 million. Eighty percent, I assume, goes to the school board, which goes to the state. That's about 1.6 million to the state. Now, again, maybe we lose out some of that because it goes to the school fund, the school authority, and they divvy it up, but there's millions of dollars in taxes that aren't being collected properly. Mark and his team have done a good job. I've made statements to say that, you know, I didn't think they were competent, maybe those are the wrong statements to say, maybe they weren't educated enough, or weren't briefed enough, experienced enough, you know, we're in our business. I'm not a doctor. You don't want me doing surgery on you. You don't want me fixing your car, because it'll break. But when it comes to real estate, I think we've proved what we can and can't do, not that we're always right, but we would like, you know, maybe some workshops and try to listen to some of our views. You know, we want parks, you know, we're jumping around it. We want some parks. We want some recreation. We can't do it without tax dollars, and, you know, we all have to pay, and if someone's not paying, you know, what is the, you know, the taxability ruling? And sometimes an attorney can have his opinion, just like we can have an opinion, just because, you know, as an attorney doesn't mean it's the right answer, and just because the judge makes a decision. Judge makes whatever decision they want. Whether you make a decision doesn't make it's right, doesn't make it right or wrong, or we make it, you know, as private citizens. But I just wanted to say that it's, it's good to see that we're making some progress, and I welcome a workshop to the public, not to developers, not to, you know, a Jim Giuliani, a Zip Shear, you know, Dave Beaufort, whatever, you know, a workshop of the public to understand where we can get some money, or how we can do some tiffs that may work, or what we can do for parks and recreation. I've been working on some ballfields and an indoor swimming pool and some stuff. I stopped working on it, and my philosophy, my brother's philosophy of this is, every time something gets started, WVU ends up with it, and we need to do something for the county. I've got an idea, and I'm working with a company just to put something out on that 13 acres that's right next to the airport, but I want to watch what I do so that we're protected, but again, I'm asking maybe for a workshop, or just pick up the phone, one of, you know, one or two, you know, at a time, if we could sit down, a couple of us, and give us our viewpoints of what we can do, but there's still a lot of taxes.
I would encourage you to just call Diane, she's the one that schedules things, to set up a work session, and even if we don't get in the nitty-gritty and decide to sort of break off it, or authorize one of us to, which we often do, authorize one of us to sort of work on a project, at least we can all set together and start the process, because I think it's a great idea yours to have that. And we ought to get together at least a couple times a year and take around our...
How many of you are allowed to have a meeting? Like, I've had meetings with Tom, I've had meetings with you.
Individually, you can get...
Individually, individually, we can.
Or are we doing at a work session?
That's why I say work.
Public and...
I would like to have the work session. I don't need to have it. There's nothing private. I don't hardly do anything private. I mean, my brother and I have family and stuff, but I would like to have it. Tom and I have talked on doing some housing. I mean, we need some housing, because everybody targets the students, and yes, it's good money, but it's also a lot of work, and the reason student properties cost so much is because of the situation, how they're built, what they're doing, the management. But my residential, I can build the same thing in the city, and same thing out of the city, and it's less to manage, run, everything is less out of the city, and, you know, I think there's a need for some economical housing. I mean, Jim has graciously stepped out in situations, you know, where he's given property to people, and we need to do stuff, and I've got some ideas that you and I have talked about six, eight months ago, to clean up an area and do something.
I think it'd be good to get it, get together for us, we're gonna, let's get started.
Let's do it.
Maybe in February, but I do appreciate, and I did want to make it very clear, it's not a celebratory time. It's, we're all doing business here. We don't want to hurt anybody. We want these private developers to keep working with WVU, and maybe someday Jim will do something with them, or we might, but we have to pay our taxes, just like we are a private developer, working with Mon General, we're paying the taxes, but anything that WVU buys that's not for education is taxable. Jim rebuilding, that's fine. That's great. Medical, I love it, and over at the United Bank Building, the Joint Hip Center, or whatever's in the back underneath Wells Fargo, that floor should be tax exempt, okay? That's medical, educational, that's the public, but it's K Casto Chaney, and Steptone Johnson, Clear Mountain Bank, and Applebee's needs to pay the same as all the other law firms and businesses and restaurants, whether it's Yesterday's or whatever, you know, restaurant out there, everybody needs to pay, so our community can continue to exist. Thank you all. Happy New Year.
Thank you, and I also...
Okay, that's medical, educational, that's the public. But it's K Casto Chaney, and Steptone Johnson, Clear Mountain Bank, and Applebee's needs to pay the same as all the other law firms and businesses and restaurants, whether it's Yesterday's, or whatever, you know, restaurant out there, everybody needs to pay, so our community can continue to exist. Thank you all, Happy New Year.
Thank you, and I also will pass on the comments to Mr. Music. I appreciate, I think we're all learning process, and I think Mr. Music will be appreciative, and, you know, as we told Mr. Giuliani, he, we hired a tax attorney, so if anyone says there was any, if there was any...
Politics.
Politics, the whole politics was we got actual facts, and we made decisions.
I would like to be able to have communication with someone, I mean, it is, the public did hire him, and I couldn't get answers, it was very frustrating for nine months. I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring the information, and I'm bringing the information, but didn't get an answer.
Well, because we really need...
Because you didn't have an answer.
Yeah, honestly.
Sometimes it takes long deliberation, like you did.
And we were told different dates on when stuff was gonna be, but again, what's over the dam's over the dam. I have no ill feelings or everything. I want to make sure that we all understand, that's why I called, for a workshop, and where can we, my brother's been on that committee for the last two years, I've had one percent tax for the county for our own roads.
Right.
It's only getting worse, I mean, I was, I was called to do, you know, a deal with a college in the state, because they have no more funds, they're cutting their funds. They want something there, and I said, well, how's it gonna be if it's a profit? You know, just like I did the Mon General, I don't want to be one to ever say that I shorted somebody.
Right.
Thank you.
Well, I appreciate it, thank you.
Okay.
Is there anyone else since we opened it up to the public, because I have to be fair? If not, okay, we will now close the meeting and ask that we go back to the correct rules since we just suspended it for that particular item. We are now under correspondence requisition for payment to Triad Engineering.
This is a letter from Brian Gallagher, requisition for payment number six for the payment due Triad Engineering for the infrastructure work to be approved to be paid from the TIP funds.
Move to approve the requisition for payment number six for Triad Engineering.
Second.
Been properly moved in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, it passes. Now we have a requisition for payment number seven to Canal, Canal Stone.
This is the same, it's for infrastructure work for the TIP project, for your approval.
Okay.
Remove to, move, excuse me, move to approve requisition for payment number seven, Canal Stone.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, payment is approved.
I have three invoices, one, the amount of two thousand dollars is the annual trustee fee for the Series two thousand fourteen B Taxable Bonds, twenty-five hundred dollars from the Special District Excise Tax Revenue Bonds Series two thousand fourteen A, and also another annual trustee fee of two thousand dollars from the two thousand fourteen B Taxable Bonds.
Okay.
And also the Hilly Chang project, if you include that one. There should be a third one, according to the agenda.
Yes, there are three.
Yes.
First, the first one I read is two thousand dollars.
Right.
Okay. These are annual trustees fees, they're all part of the state excise, or the county excise tax, that's from the state sales tax. I would move for all three of the annual trustees fees for infrastructure project, ballpark project, and Hilly Chang project be approved.
Second.
Been properly moved in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, it passes. We have a letter from NPO requesting the reserve fund for operating expenses. All three of us were at the meeting at the NPO function, and basically, all this is doing is, for whatever reason, there seems to be sometimes a time lag between when you have to make the payment and the money that they're getting from the state.
And sometimes things.
So what we're trying to do is just put the money in, it's just put there, and then we use it, and then it's put back, it's just so it allows everyone to be paid, and the bills be paid on it at the time.
It's no additional money, it's just a cash flow issue, and I would move we approve the NPO reserve fund for operating expenses.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
There's against, it passes. Transport agreement.
I've received the final agreement from Town Street City, this makes it complete, and we are going to start billing as of January thirty-first.
Okay, I know that's just for information purposes.
Yes.
Okay, under unfinished business, I thought we might have a little de-discussion of what happened, and that was discussed about the Regional Chair, I thought maybe when we get to there, we'll discuss that.
Oh, the Regional Chair, okay.
Yeah, just a general discussion.
Sure.
Okay, is there any other new business?
No.
Great, okay.
New business.
Unfinished business.
Correspondent.
Correspondence, see, I'm already... Okay, discussion to revitalize the Montague Historical Society, but I will turn this over to Commissioner Hawkins for clarification.
What we're talking about here is something that already exists, it's not the historical society, but you do have a creation of nineteen ninety-eight combined County Commission for a Montague County Historical Landmarks Commission, and that's what we'll be referring to. And I would like to see it resurrected. The reason for this resurrection is that we have a very active town society, Morgantown Landmark Society, as well as now a very active historical society, and I think just the members were all appointed for a three-member, five-member board. I'm willing to serve on this board. They had three-year terms, the last appointments expired in two thousand fourteen, so we would ask the public, if this board is resurrected, to make application to be reviewed, to be posted. What we're doing is identifying these historical properties on a county-wide scale, just identifying them, then maybe we can actually cause some preservation, have the ability to then do a lot of other things. I'm looking toward this as more as an economic development, because I believe that working with Convention Bureau, we could develop historical tourism. And I think really, when you look at, we have a, if you don't know, we do have a Morgantown History Museum, it's just two blocks down on Kirk Street. I advise you all to go see it. But if you look at everybody working together, using history department interns, as well as perhaps a, another intern from another, maybe the V A D school, you could work with our Convention Bureau, and I'm thinking like, I even gave it a name, it's called Stay One More Day. Stay one more day in Morgantown, go to Philippi where the first land battle was, go to Fort Deceste, Cricket, Fort Braddock, Spray, Enu, Cradex, Firth, I can name a lot of them. If they were identified for people to be able to reach out and see, then I think this would be a good thing for the community.
Are there any particular requirements for the board appointments? The, make sure that anyone can fly, it doesn't matter.
When you set it up...
Yeah. Anyone?
Anyone? Yeah. I would move that we restore or re-establish the Landmarks Commission, is that the name of it?
Yes, Historic Landmarks Commission.
The Historic Landmarks Commission, and as a part of that motion, I would add that we appoint Commissioner Hawkins to be our representative on that commission, and that our staff advertise and bring forth potential people of interest that we could appoint to that Historical Landmark Commission.
Thank you, I will second it.
It's been properly moved in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed. Just clarifying, how many people are allowed on that board?
It was a five-member board.
Five-member board, so that way...
A county commission with three-year terms.
Okay, so that way, so Ben has it down, okay, I didn't realize it was five-year.
Yes.
I mean, yeah, five-member, okay. Okay, B, a letter regarding service animal policy. We have a letter before us, and what it asks for is the signatures of all three of us to verify our policy. How does the group want to do?
Motion to a person. And sign to them.
I'll second.
It's been properly moved in second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed. I ask that we sign the letter at the end of the meeting, and deliver it. Okay. Let's see what else. Okay, now we have a memorandum, MOU with Marion County Solid Waste Authority. That was what we discussed last week, and I'll also ask Jeremy if there's anything new they had asked us for a week. Is everything up to date that they're willing to now do it? Because that was the question the board had to meet in Marion County.
The board had to meet because of the weather on Monday, they all weren't able to meet, but I think as of this morning, and I don't know if we received it yet, their executive director of the Marion County Solid Waste Authority is supposed to email us to sign agreement this morning.
In addition, I talked with Randy Elliott, Randy Elliott of Marion County, and Chris Sinali, Sinali, they're administrator down there, and they're very positive of wanting to work, as well as Preston County, and Taylor County has commissioners, has represented that they want to work on coming together with some regional plan to deal with solid waste. Again, it's a state, everything has to be put through the state and approved by the state because it's Solid Waste Authority is a state function, but we can work together with the Solid Waste Authorities, with the different counties, to come together with some cooperative effort, so I would move we approve the memorandum of understanding and authorize the president to sign the signature.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, it passes. And just for clarification for the public in number two, people understand there's three locations at this time in that area. It's Arnettsville, Blacksville, and Wadestown, and I believe that's also supposed to start also on Super Bowl Sunday?
Well...
Or not, okay, until when it gets started.
Right. There's two sites for sure, Arnettsville and Wadestown. The third site needs Board of Education approval, they would like to do it at Mason Dixon Elementary. I also continue to offer Mason Dixon Park, which has already been set up. It's a little more out of their way, I think they're trying to keep everything to two eighteen and down, and maybe going St. Louis, ready to get away, it's time to get to... Their plant's actually in Farmington, so that, I think that's the reason why they're trying to look at it that way. Also, we talked this morning, and I talked to Bob McConnell from our Solid Waste Authority, and then I talked to Mark Holstein from the State Solid Waste Management Board about the bins that belong to us, and they would like to start putting them in place on Monday.
Okay.
And Mark said that we really, all we need, we don't even need an understanding with anybody. Bob said, you know, it's ours, ours, and they still have an issue with, you know, REEP and their own bins and everything, so those will be handled by them, but we, Marion County and Donnie DeBerry and I will probably figure out what is ours, and they can start moving our equipment into place, you know, to start this on Monday, to start being put in place, then probably make an announcement to, when they're gonna start taking stuff.
Now, that deals with the western end. Let's just give an update what we have right now, because there is a little bit of a change of what's going on with the Republic and the single stream, you want to explain that?
Okay, right now, we have our site at Walmart on Grazer Road or Hornback Road, and that site is secured. Our site at Mount near Mall is secured. And then City of Westover, once again, has graciously agreed to do their site. I think the Solid Waste Authority is gonna bring back an agreement, or the titles to the two vehicles, either today or tomorrow, that belong to us, so we can maybe get one of those in place to, for Westover to use, to haul the stuff from the Westover site.
And for clarification, Mr. Hawkins, we'll find out by tomorrow about the one site in the Cheat Lake area, is that called Pierpont Landing? Is that what it's called?
I've understood.
No, it doesn't have an area, it's called...
It doesn't have, it doesn't.
No, it doesn't have an area, by the way, it's Timback in Cheat Lake.
And also, out of the University Town Center, we do not have a spot.
And we need to get that clear, University Town Center, for reasons in the past, right now are not able to or wanting to have us out there right now. I believe if once we start showing in good faith what we're able to do, I'm hoping that that may change down the road.
Right.
And there's also a possibility, and I would ask the members, since you said flexibility, if by chance, say, we only have like three sites, we may put four bins at the three sites, because I really believe Super Bowl Sunday, we're gonna actually, I, everyone's talking about the recycling, so I have a feeling that first week, we're gonna be inundated and excited about that. So, I did want to say that. Also, I thought you'd find it very interesting, I met with, the Canal County Commissioners looked us up, and they were thrilled to hear what we were doing, in fact, they wanted to know how we did it, because Canal County is having...
Oh, they've had the same problem now.
It's even worse, they say it.
Yeah, it's a worse situation, and they had the same situation that we did, and having to wait till they collapse before they could get involved.
So they wanted to know how we did it, because they cannot believe in one week we were able to do what they've been trying to do for one year. And they did also ask a question that I will throw back, and I said I will have, Jeremy, you call them, if there's any excess stuff from REEP or something that we can't use, they might be interested in buying it, or that because we said, they said, I talked to the state, they said you can pass it on to another, but that will be up to you, and if you could come back to us, I'll give you the names. But they were very, very positive towards us, and could not believe in one week we were able to do this.
I think before the REEP passed the agreement, the Solid Waste, they're researching anything that's in the back or whatever, and then they may reclaim everything that belongs to them. So, until that happens, we don't have...
Yeah, we don't know, but they're interested if there's anything extra, and they appreciate it.
Another thing that you mentioned from other commissioners is this is what we'll work on over the next six months to come up with sort of a law project or something. And this is also why it's so essential that all the commissioners and at times the staff participate in this interaction with the other fifty-five counties and the commissioners. Wetzel County Commissioners, they have a different approach, in that because of the huge drop in the marketability and the cost, they couldn't, they couldn't use, they couldn't financially do the way the Solid Waste Authority, Montague County did it, they couldn't do it through a clock every day. But what they're doing, and it shows how people can be created, what they're doing is they have a full staff to help sort on Saturday morning from nine to twelve, and bring your recyclables to one recycling spot, and they have a staff to help people sort it right there. They, you back your car up, and they take the bags, and they help the person sort it, and the different areas right there, and they've made it marketable that way, you know. So there's a lot of different approaches depending on the thing, and that's what we'll be working on over the next six months.
Great, okay, good, I thank you. I do want to just add an item D, and I know there's time-wise, so I like to keep our responses short, but I'd like to relate it to two specific areas of our report to Charleston. One would be, I can't remember what I was gonna do, but the second one's gonna be Senate Bill two fifty-eight, if anybody wanted to discuss that, and it may have been just recycling, I'm trying to remember what the other, I think it was recycling. So if anybody wants to... Oh, no, no, it was the jail, regional jail.
Regional, regional jail.
Regional jail. If anybody wanted to say anything, we had a great presentation by Mr. DeLong.
Yes.
And he was very interested, he understood our concerns, he agreed with him, and he felt that what he would like to see down the road is two more jails being built, one for our area in Fairmont, and one in Parkersburg. He believed there was a real necessity there, and they were looking into it. Nothing agreed upon, but at least he said they were looking into it.
Now, the third aspect of that would be the possibility of taking a Dogger's chair, and this is just, this is all philosophy, and this is just kicking around ideas, it's no commitment, to take the, since there's a shortage of beds in the Division of Corrections, take the current regional jail and turn it over to the Division of Corrections, or the Department of Corrections, is what it's called, the Department of Corrections, and then, as you said, build another pod over in the Wood County area, and another pod up here.
And, yeah, and I think it's something that was redeveloped well. The other area, did you, anyone speak?
Before we shift to that, this might be a good time for me to bring this up instead of waiting for the, waiting for the report. I have received from John Deskins a proposal to proceed with the cost-benefit analysis of a jail. John Deskins, if you recall, is the economist for WVU, which are a lot of these issues that I met with previously, he had got balled down and was unable to get the information as quickly as possible, but I did get it this past, this past week, weekend, actually. With that, I will bring it before you, well, next week, and present it. I had mentioned to Preston County Commissioners, Taylor County Commissioners, and Marion County Commissioners, all of whom were present, that I had that, and they were excited about participating. So once, my approach, if it's acceptable to this commission, would be to present to this commission, if we find it satisfactory and all, then with your authorization, I think you previously gave me the authorization, but to reconfirm, with your authorization, once we find that acceptable, I would travel to the other four commission meetings and say, this is what we got, to try to get the board... we got, to try to get the board agreement. In principle, all county commissions have agreed to this cost benefit study at this point.
Good, and it's something that we have requested, and I think it's a move, as we said, a regional version of the solid waste program. Again, just real quick update, I mean, I want to thank the newspaper, the radio, Senate Bill 258. I mean, I want to go on record to thank Senator Bob Beach and also Senator Ken Leonhardt, who helped us explain the bill in the Transportation Committee. It was received extremely well, extremely well. And one of the clarifications that someone asked, they could not believe that this 1% or any cost of it was project driven. So that once that project was done, it would stop, we would stop collecting the money. And that was something they really liked, so there's no additional, or we would accumulate any funds. So that went real well. It is now going on to Finance Committee. I know it's gonna be introduced by someone in the House, but we will see how that goes at this time. But I thought it was very, very positive, received very, very well, and it was a packed crowd. And basically, what was very clear was, we're the only group, some of the legislators on that evening came to me and said, we're the first group that came up with an actual plan and/or an idea which no one else yet from the state has even come up with. So it's getting a lot of talk, and I think it's getting, gonna get a lot of notice. So again, I want to thank everyone. And I also want to thank Mr. Callen, who's been working on that diligently for hours. Is there any new business?
If I may, Ed, wanna add anything?
Yeah, I look, he gave his look.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'll hear, yeah.
It was very, it was very engaging, it was really quite an experience, all of us with you, to see that a unanimous vote came from those groups, there was really no dissent.
That was a shock, I mean, we were very.
Very positive. I expected at least somebody to raise an objection, and there was none raised.
No. Under new business, I see we have none, is there any new business? All right, good, we're moving forward. Okay, is there any reports from any elected officials? There are no elected officials here, great. Okay, are there any reports from department supervisors? We kicked them out? I guess they, they got so, it was so exciting.
There was one there.
There was one.
Okay, now, you recommend?
I'm the lone survivor here.
Okay. Well, we're trying to move quickly, okay. Reports from county commissioners, this time I've always gone to you, why don't we go to you first?
Okay. I really didn't have anything until I opened the paper this morning, because we've talked about so many things. You know, the old axiom says you never, you never fight with someone that buys their ink by the barrel. But I also go, having a background in public relations, also go by Henry David Thoreau's quote, matter of fact, when I was Public Relations Director for the United Mind Workers, I had that quote on my bulletin board. It said that "The madman stood in the middle of town square and shouted insanity's. No one stopped to answer him, so everyone thought they to be true." Well, the madman I'm referring to here is the editorial board of the Post. They should be ashamed of publishing a letter with such falsity. When I know the reporter, Ben knows better. I know that they know better. They're no better than the National Enquirer when they generate actual untrue facts like the letter appeared. First, I want to deal with the first part. Tom Bloom and I are very close personal friends. We have been for years. We have no personal enemies with one another. We're both extremely passionate people. We both speak our minds and we respect one another. Tom Bloom and I will always be friends. We will debate issues, that's what it's about, issues. But we'll be friends forever, I believe. I know we have been for 40 years, has it been, Tom?
Since I've been here, yes.
Yeah. We've been close personal friends, so there is no personal animosity between us. Second, I want to add that with Commissioner Hawkins coming on, he's traveled with us, I don't know Ed as well, but I am totally confident with our travels over Charleston in the first three weeks of the months since he's been elected, that we're going to develop a close personal professional relationship. And at some point, he and I may be at each other's throat, Tom and he may be at each other throat, but it will be on an issue. I am confident of that. It will never degrade to personal animosities. And for the editorial board to put in a letter that promotes that this commission has regressed the personal animosities and that somehow people should get involved between this personal disagreement, there is no personal disagreement. Policy, philosophy, direction, but I don't think there will ever be a personal disagreement. The second part of it is, is I am convinced that if we had freedom of information rights against the editorial board, we could find out that this letter was written before, before last Friday, when the truth and the understanding before the Saturday earth, and they put it in anyway. I have received calls from people who wrote emails, worked for WBU, that wrote emails to apologize because they did not understand that the Solid Waste Authority is a state function, it's a state entity. We had no right and authority to do anything. This commission, you know, and I liked it to them, I said, well, you know, you worked at WBU, I said, it was one of the professors up there, I says, maybe, now that you sort of understand it, maybe you could better understand, if the county commission decided that there was too much snow and we canceled classes and told all WBU students to stay home, do you think Gordon Gee and the Board of Governors might have something to say with that? "Oh, yeah, well, I didn't understand it, and, well, you know, I read the newspapers?" I said, "Yes," because a newspaper doesn't understand it. And it's a shame that we got a National Enquirer letter to appear. Tom and I were good the next day, patting each other on the back, and to put such a shameful, shameful, shameful letter. I mean, if you want to be the National Enquirer, be the National Enquirer, if you want to be honest journalists, be honest journalists. Now, I don't, I have, I've got a bachelor's degree in journalism, I have greatest respect for the reporters. And I think I could speak this way, even though they do buy barrels of ink, because I spent, I spent part of my career in journalism. I know what it's like on the other end, but I had to bring that to light. And along with this bill, I want to add this in closing, okay? And I know all the other two commissioners worked just as diligently as I did with all the other legislators, trying to explain the importance of this bill and how this bill works, and why a referendum will never work. The bill is designed and structured in a fashion that there's public involvement throughout, that there's negotiation at the federal level, at the state DOH level, at the local MPO level, working with developers, with the Development Office, it's got approval with the DOH, and then you gotta do, then you gotta come up with a bonding scheme, and you gotta establish the interest. All these things, all these plans, everything is developed in cooperation, as Tom emphasized, in cooperation with one another. And then, only then, does the commission consider, based on the financing package, the levying of some sort of sales tax, sales tax that, as Tom Whitt testified yesterday to, four out of five people that will be paying that tax will not live in Montague County. It'll be made up of people that come in here to work, come in here to go to school, that are passing through. Four out of five will be the ones that are paying this sales tax, the people that are driving on the road. I explained that to our Republican delegation down there, the legislature, and they were dumbfounded. They were like, "Well, now I get it, now we see how there's so much personal involvement and how a referendum would really be stupid, because you could never, it would never pass. A, it would never pass, but B, you could never have anything to vote on because interest rates and plans and funding levels, they changed too quick." And I had some, I had one of, and I won't say who it was, but one of the Republican delegation tell, asked me to do a few things. And one of the things was, come back here and straighten out the newspaper, because they don't know what the hell they're talking about. And that's the way he said it. I didn't use that word, he used that word, the Republican, one of our Republican legislators down there. And I said, "Well, I think the Chamber of Commerce already is going to take that to that and address that." So I want to emphasize that this commission, pre Commissioner Hawkins and now post Commissioner Hawkins, I think are dedicated to serving the people and working together, and personality will never get into our disagreements. And anyone that gets in the middle between the three of us is making a big mistake because we are totally dedicated to professionalism and we respect one another. That's my belief. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Hawkins.
I was in the following. I really would like to echo that. There's been nothing but a good spirit of cooperation. I'd like to thank everybody for their emails that expressed concern for recycling. I think it's very important in our community, obviously. These emails reflected that. It is good to see community input. So that's what we're about. This particular commission, I think, after this past weekend, being in Charleston, it was really great networking, not just at meetings, but talking to those from Preston, from Marion, from Harrison, as well as Taylor County, finding out what their specific needs and wants might be, that we might look toward some other areas of regionalism if it's permitted. So I look forward during these next years, a lot of together, but both these commissioners on a great level. Thank you.
Okay. Just quickly, I'm not one who appreciates going to statewide meetings, I can tell you that, but I must admit that this was an exceptional weekend for Montague County. Not only were we the talk of what we were doing, but much of the questions were, how are you being so successful, what can we pass on to these counties so they could also be successful? I mean, they were envious, but positive envious, not like others that want to take stuff away from us. But they were very positive. And I also want to say, too, our staff has a great reputation, and Diane DiMedici was missed but very well received, because when I said, "Well, I'll have to go back to Diane," they said, "Oh, yeah, we always talk to Diane because she knows what's going on." So what I say, and then Diane tries to interpret my English. But I did want to, I did want to go on the record and say thank you, because you're well received down there. Another thing that like happened is different counties shared ideas, and the one thing that I liked is, I think one county may be saving us over $50,000 because one county just went through the entire process, through attorneys and so on, for over a year, of a personnel policy program, and they are willing to give us their entire program and what they went through for us to review, to consider. So, I mean, it's those kind of things and other areas that people want to work with us, and that's what we were very appreciative of. So I just want to say, it was extremely helpful, I learned a lot about for the first time. I thought I used to know how to lobby when I was a teacher, 75 people, and, you know, we had about 75 legislators who showed up and to try and explain the bill and explain recycling, explaining, everyone was asking questions, which I'd rather have that than just turning the other way. So I think all three of us were working very hard and working room, as they say. I was asked, did you still want to go with an executive session?
Yes, if I may address it, if you would.
Go ahead.
Okay. We have a, we have an issue that's been presented to us that comes under Executive Session, Code Section 69A4B, exceptions to a public meeting for executive session, comes under nine, to consider matters involving or affecting the purchase, sale, or lease of property, advanced construction planning, the investment of public funds, or other matters involving commercial competition which if made public, might adversely affect the financial or other interests of the state or any political subdivision. We have an issue that's been brought to us, that the mere disclosure of the issue could fall in that category which I just read, and therefore, I would move that we go into Executive Session, Section under 69A4B, Section 9.
It's been properly moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. I believe it shouldn't be more than 10 minutes, I mean, it may even be less than that, so I appreciate your indulgence to go with executive session for 10 minutes, hopefully 10 minutes. Okay, do I have a motion come out of executive session?
Yeah, I believe we come out of executive session, turn to regular session.
Okay, there's been a proper motion in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Is there anything else before we move to adjournment?
Yes, I would like to make a motion that we authorize Commissioner Hawkins to work on, represent us on a project and discussion that still is exempt from public disclosure as it comes under Section 69A49, which is to consider matters involving or affecting the purchase, sale, or lease of property, advanced construction planning, the investment of public funds, or other matters involving commercial competition, which if made public, might adversely affect the financial or other interests of the state or any political subdivision. I move.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, can I have a move for adjournment?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Properly moved in second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are closed for this evening, for this meeting. And in two minutes, we will reopen and we'll start on the work session.